City Council Special Meeting of October 11th, 2021. It is now 5:07 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please take role?
Mayor Turco.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Bates.
Here.
Councilmember Dobie.
Here.
Councilmember Nofolda.
Here.
Okay, we'll start with special orders of the day. Item 3A, Launch of Los Alba's Program. And I think we'll be getting a report from a city manager or Mr. Noda.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to mention before we started that the city is undertaking in a series of economic development programs, one of them being the Los Alba's, which I'll ask our Development Services Director, Ron Noda, to get into the details of. But this is a city's first steps into this type of programming. I can see this growing over time, but this is a good entryway as we start to try to find out different ways where the city can actually step in and assist our businesses.
I appreciate that. And before you start, Ron, I should have mentioned, we do not have general public comment today, but we do have public comment on each of the agenda items. So if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this specific item, you may do so now. Seeing none, we will move on. Go ahead, Ron.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you. Tonight, we're going to discuss the Los Alba's with the council tonight, and hopefully at the end of our discussion, council will authorize staff to launch the program. So COVID-19, as you are aware, has deeply affected our small business community in Los Alamos. We have approximately 1,100 businesses. We have a little bit more, but you know, when you have a multifamily commercial property, you have to apply for a business license, so we didn't count that in our equation, but we have approximately 1,100 businesses here. And so a lot of them are small businesses, and they're slowly recovering from the COVID-19 pandemic. The Los Alba's program is intended to promote local shopping and community connectivity, and it's both a benefit for both the resident and the community, the business community. So the residents will receive $50 worth of Los Alba's in the mail, approximately, again, if council approves it, the 1st of November, and they are allowed to spend it in Los Alamos at a Los Alamos business that is willing to enter to be part of the program. Right? And so, again, it helps the resident because they go out there and they connect it, and they can go out there and, you know, shop, play, support, and, you know, again, benefit the business community in Los Alamos. And of course, it promotes economic development for the business community. So inside your packet tonight, you know, there are some guidelines that each business will get up, will receive along with the residents when they receive their Los Alba's. So I'm not going to go over every single one, I'm just going to highlight some of them. But businesses that are ineligible to participate in the program include cannabis-related business, gas station, home-based business, and online food delivery services. Los Alba's are not redeemable for cash. It shall be utilized within established period. So one thing I want to point out here, that the Los Alba's, you have to spend the Los Alba's, again, they come in $50 total, $10 increments, but you have to spend it in value of something a little bit higher. So what that means is, to spend $10 of Los Alba's, you have to spend $15 worth. So you have to actually put in $5 of your own money for that Los Alba's. Again, this is to promote economic development and support the businesses here in the community. In one of your attachments, it shows a little scale there. Again, if you spend $20, you have to spend $20 of Los Alba's. You have to purchase something minimum $30 worth of value. If you spend $30 worth of Los Alba's, then you have to go up to $45 minimum value. So there's a scale that goes up. Right? Los Alba's cannot be used for the purchases of the following items, such as lottery tickets, tobacco-related products, and alcohol. What that means, you can't go to purchase straight alcohol from a 7-Eleven or a liquor store or something like that. You could purchase alcohol with your dinner at a restaurant. And interested business must have a current Los Alamos business license with no outstanding code violation. So our intention here with the Los Alba's program, again, if council approves it tonight, is the staff, one of the staff I have here tonight is our analyst, Michelle Mueller, will actually hit the concrete tomorrow and go out there and talk to the businesses and have them sign up for the businesses at that time. We will communicate with them the guidelines. We will also do a online, like a Zoom session, to, again, educate the businesses and the residents on the guidelines and, and the other requirements that we have out there. And then we could also record it and put it on our website for anyone that wants to look at it, view it at another time. So again, the Los Alba's program is tentatively scheduled to begin Wednesday, November 10th, and we're going for all the way till December 19th. So of course, embedded in those dates is Small Business Saturday, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and of course, the holiday shopping as well. And again, coinciding with this is the Development Services Department is going to launch a huge outreach program where we're going to go out there and market shopping local, supporting local, stay local, play local, et cetera. And then after that, the businesses will have 45 days to, and the deadline here is tentatively Thursday, February 24th, to submit all required documentation to receive the monies from the city. And we want to note there that if the business do want to do that, they can also apply and submit for reimbursement on a bi-weekly basis. But at the end of the, the spending time of the Los Alba's, again, which is Sunday, December 2019th, they have 45 days to recoup their money back from the city. The fiscal impact here, there's approximately 4,400 households. Each household received $50, comes up to approximately $221,000. There's a printing of the bucks, outreach and mailing, comes up to a grand total of 227,425, and the city's receipt of the funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, which we utilize to fund this program. That concludes my presentation. I am here for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Just a couple of questions. Is the fourth quarter considered eligible businesses?
No, we couldn't get that down with the County of Orange, so technically that is not Los Alamos, so we couldn't include that.
Okay, and are nonprofits considered eligible businesses? So if I want to go and I want to donate $50 to Precious Life, is that an eligible business? It's a two-part question, but I'll have you answer that one first.
Um, we did not include that in our guidelines, but we can. Part of our outreach there is, again, we're supporting local, which is supporting our nonprofits, so.
And one of the reasons I'm asking in part two of my question is, Precious Life has a thrift store, can they use it in there? U Center is going to have their Christmas tree lot, can they use it in there? And if the answer is yes, then we pretty much have to include all the nonprofits, whether it's to buy something or just to donate the $50.
Okay. We will, yeah, we'll look into that.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
Ron, I think we should emphasize, and you made the point, that this is not Los Alamos general fund tax revenue. This is money that we received from the federal government for COVID relief, specifically for this type of a program. And I think we need to make sure the residents fully understand that, that this isn't something we're coming up with just to spend taxpayers' money. This was money that was given to us by the Fed specifically to stimulate small business throughout the country. Other cities, I'm assuming, could use their money for the same type of program.
That's correct, sir. We'll include that in our outreach, definitely.
Got it.
Any other questions, comments?
I had a quick one, and I'm mostly asking as a formality, because I know y'all with your eyes and your tees, but I'm assuming that there is something someone signs to say that we emphatically understand exactly how this program works, even because our residents may or may not, but our business owners absolutely will have to, so I'm certain that, but it's just for whoever's listening, that there's something that will be signed that says, "I understand that this is the way this works." If someone comes in and they don't, I can explain it to them, because the onus is on the business owners, right? It's not necessarily on our residents.
That's correct.
Okay.
Correct. No, there is a registration form that the businesses that are willing to participate in this program have to fill out and have to sign, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nofolda?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to say, you know, this is something that I was skeptical we'd be able to get done in time for Small Business Week and by the end of the year, just because of the volume of work involved in figuring out all the specifics, the legalities, all of that. So I just want to commend Ron and Chet and the rest of the team for figuring this out. This is something I brought up to Chet a couple of times, but he was on top of it, and we really appreciate this. I think this is great. It's not our Los Alamos money, it's federal money that's coming in, helping our residents, and then on top of that, helping our businesses as well. So it's a phenomenal program, and I know it's a lot of work, so thank you, staff, for that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add, again, if the council approves, and, you know, we'd like to do a little photo op as official launching of the Los Alba's. I've placed next to each of you a blow-up version of how the dollars would like, so I will have our, the Director of Recreation come snap a real quick photo. We'll do a press release for the papers and everything, but again, for the residents that are, businesses that are listening or tuning in, you should be receiving this in the mail early November. And again, it's $50 worth of Los Alba's. So again, if you're okay with it, Mayor, we can proceed with this photo op.
Let's, let's make sure it passes first.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we can take a picture now. There's always a photo, there's always a photo that staff wants us to take. Oh, it doesn't.
I think we need to stay up here.
Stay up here, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So these will be mailed out. When should residents expect their $50 Los Alba's per household?
Early November, hopefully the first week of November.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. Okay, next item on the agenda is item 3B. The subject is selection of a firm for integrated waste management services. Before we get a staff report, I will open it up for public comment. Our city clerk has checked the code today and confirmed public comment on a special item is limited to three minutes. However, I see we have a lot of speakers, I've gotten a lot of speaker cards, and I would move and seek the council's agreement on extending time to five minutes, if that's, if that's okay with everyone.
That's fine.
Do we need to make a motion, or? Okay. Okay, and we are, we have to cut off at five minutes, is that right? Okay. Okay. With that, I'll open it for public comment, and we'll start with the speaker cards, just in the order that they're placed here. We have a Mr. David Marquez. Feel free to please come up and speak on item 3B.
Good evening, Mayor and Honorable City Council Members. My name is David Marquez, and I proudly serve as Union Stewart for Teamsters Local 396. I have been a commercial driver with Republic Services for the past 24 years, and I am joined here this evening by our General Manager of Republic Services, Long Beach-based Holling Yard, and a group of your Los Alamos drivers who were able to attend today's meeting. Our Los Alamos drivers have an average of 15 and a half years of experience servicing your residents, businesses, and apartment buildings. We know your streets as good as anyone, and we have built meaningful relationships with your community members. We cannot imagine coming to work one day and not servicing your city. We feel like we are part of your community, and we kindly ask you to please consider keeping us in Los Alamos. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Manuel. Manny?
Thank you for the five minutes. I promise I won't take all of it. Good evening, Mayor Turco, Honorable Members of the City Council. My name is Manuel Guevea, or Manny to all of you. For the past four years, I've had the pleasure of serving as the Municipal Manager on behalf of Republic Services to the City of Los Alamos. I have also served on the Board of Directors to the Los Alamos Area Chamber of Commerce, the Serve Los Alba Steering Committee, and I am the 2020 recipient of the Volunteer of Merit Award on behalf of the city. Long before my arrival, you've received steadfast and unwavering committed partner in Republic as we've confronted California's regulatory challenges together, to which we have always met your full compliance. Tonight, you are asked to make a decision about one of your largest contracts, and we politely ask you to also consider proceeding negotiations with your proven and trusted partner. Tonight's recommendation is one of significant risk, layered with red flags, during what is already considered unprecedented times for the economy, labor force, supply chain, and the environment. Three out of seven evaluated proposers submitted bids significantly below the cost of actually providing solid waste services today. Any proposer, including tonight's recommendation, offering a mixed waste collection program whose processing facility does not meet the state's 75% organics diversion requirement is deemed non-compliant with SB 1383 by CalRecycle. These proposed rates and compliance solutions are not sustainable, which will inevitably result in the future price increases to cover their costs of reaching your city's compliance. With less than 90 days until commencement, any non-union proposer who does not currently have the workforce to service Los Alamos, but aims to hire our union employees as a cornerstone of their operational plan, will be unsuccessful. Proposers who do not currently possess the necessary carts and bins in their existing inventory to service this contract by January 1st will be unsuccessful. While SB 1383 is upon us, it is imperative that you partner with a company having a concrete track record with, for compliance with state mandates. As you've heard, our drivers have an average of 15 and a half years in Los Alamos alone. As your incumbent hauler, no one knows your streets, alleys, and enclosures better than we do. We already have the vehicles, the equipment, the processing facilities, to keep your city in full compliance with state mandates. By continuing to partner with us, your daily services remain status quo, but now, they would be enhanced with greater value added by this proposed new agreement. You will never have to worry about your city's compliance with SB 1383, nor will you ever hear from us coming back to ask for an extraordinary rate increase to cover the compliance of your contract. We thank the hard work of the Solid Waste Evaluation Committee, who worked tirelessly on the RFP, and we respect your decisions. However, we politely ask the City Council to see past the lowest price proposal that guarantees itself unsustainable. Instead, I ask each of you to please also enter into negotiations with my Republic team and I, your trusted solid waste partner for so many years. By doing so, this process creates healthy competition amongst two companies, and ultimately results in the very best service offerings to Los Alba. At the end of it all, we love Los Alba. I love Los Alba. I may not physically live here, but I feel just as much a part of the Los Alamos community as anyone else who calls this beautiful city their home. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, we've got Isabel Rios.
Good evening, Mayor Turco, and members of today's City Council. I appreciate you having me here today. My name is Isabel Rios. Some of you may know me, and some of you may not. I have spent my last 14 years working with the solid waste franchise agreements, and I was the contract manager for the County of Orange, OC Waste and Recycling. I know some of you are familiar with that or not. But during this time that I was at OC Waste and Recycling, I served as administrator overseeing the contract state regulatory compliance, and for the nine Orange County unincorporated areas, which I have very, a lot of passion for, because I've been with the county for so long and very passionate about making sure we do our part when I was at the county, in which I have exclusive and waste recycling franchise agreements for when I was here at OC Waste and Recycling. But what the uniqueness about where we are right now is that during that time period, I managed the nine exclusive franchise agreements, which included the wide scope of new services, including compliance for SB 1383, AB 939, 1826, which relates to food recycling, as well as AB 1827, which is food recovery, which working with a lot of the nonprofit organizations in Orange County to achieve the goals and, and recovering food and bringing those food to other organizations that residents need food services for. The new agreements that I worked with over the last time period were granted in July. The County of Orange released an RFP. I helped in overseeing the RFP process and selection in conjunction with my leadership, which I was very fortunate with. I have wonderful leadership, Tom Cottrellis, and many of our other directors that I work with, as well as our CEO at the County of Orange. As you know, what I bring here to you is to bring you awareness. SB 1383 compliance orders are on the horizon. It's not an easy task, it's a difficult task. It's a challenging task for many of us who are in this industry. The state passed, as you are aware, a state mandate that will financially impact all of Orange County residents, businesses, and school districts as well. And as well as the City of Los Alamos, when you think about this, this mandate impacts all of us, and we are here as Republic Services have the experience and to lead and provide the right efforts and support, to be able to provide the resources that the City of Los Alamos meets all the state mandates set forth by 18, 1383, by SB 1383, I'm sorry. I personally attended a virtual meeting. It's kind of interesting about this, because even before, and I haven't shared this with you, and I didn't put it, I have it here in my notes, I am now with Republic Services. It's an amazing transition coming from government and community relations and contract relations and managing franchise agreements with all the haulers in Orange County, because I manage the waste disposal agreements, the franchise agreements for the county unincorporated, as well as importation in the County of Orange. But coming here to Republic Services, which is a great family to work for, I wanted to give you my perspective and things that I think are key to understand that's happening, and what I've been involved in. So before coming to Republic Services, as, as a person who works very closely with all 34 jurisdictions at the County of Orange when I was there, I attended the meeting with the city staff. And I want to recommend, I want to really commend city staff for doing a great job in promoting and bringing awareness to the residents and at their hall, town hall meetings about the communities, meetings, about what SB 1383 is about, and about the RFP process. City staff has done a great job, as well as the consultant, Mike Valier, in communicating that information. I also want to commend the city for doing such an excellent job in informing the changes, the impacts, what's going to come in the horizon. It's not an easy task. Change of behavior and things that are going to happen with SB 1383 is so new to all of us. To me, I work in the County of Orange, now I'm here at Republic, it's going to impact all of our residents in the City of Los Alamos. Relevant to, to this evening's discussion, can I just add one more?
Are we allowed to do that, or we're not, we're not allowed, we're not allowed to do that? Thank you, thank you, though, for your time.
I do just want to close by saying, I oversee the franchise agreement process with the city, with the County of Orange, and I will share with you that the median price that we had from all the bidders, and I know I'm closing, but I just want to share, was $24.32. 19, I mean, the dollars, $12.99 is not fair, and I will tell you right now, I will be questioning that option. And I wish I could share more, but.
Thank you.
Thank you for your opportunity. Please consider Republic Services the opportunity to negotiate and come to the floor, and I appreciate your opportunity and your time. Sorry about this, I didn't mean to interrupt, but.
Thank you, but that's okay, but we did extend the time to avoid a situation like this, so we want to make sure we're in compliance with our code, so let's.
I've got it.
Please keep it to five minutes, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Next, Koby DeLeon. Cory, excuse me, Cory.
Hi, my name is, let's see if I can do this. Hi, my name is Cory DeLeon, and I have been in our community. I came here in 1974. I grew up here, and all of my children grew up here. I am the immediate past president of the Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce, so small business is a little bit of my passion. I wanted to come here today to discuss a little bit about the proposal that you are making. First of all, I believe in fiscal solvency, and I think that, I know that this decision probably came down to dollars, and I think that's important. I won't get into that, and because you have, you have professionals that have already gone into that. I didn't know too much about universal waste systems, and so I'm a little bit, a little bit of a research freak, and I did a little bit of investigation. Universal Waste System has Google reviews of an average of 1.6, and Yelp reviews of 1.5. We live in a community that has been devastated by COVID, and we are home more, our businesses are under so many different compliance issues, including some of the restaurants that are coming up with some major considerations. When I, when we've looked in Seal Beach, we share a lot of the same things, including Manny, who sits both on the Los Alamos City, City of Commerce Board, as well as the Seal Beach Chamber City of Commerce Board. So when we go to investigate these types of issues, not just resident issues, but small business issues, we often seek the help of professionals, professionals that are there consistently. I love the Los Alba's and how you are reaching out to the community. I think it's inspirational. You have federal dollars to play with there. So often, you sit there and, and we deal with the same kind of issues. We don't have federal dollars to play with most of the time. Where we, the power that comes into that are these important corporate, corporate partners, corporate partners like Republic. I can't speak to any of the contract or anything like that, but I want to know how a company spends their money. I can tell you how Republic has spent its money in my investigation with Los Alamos. It's spent its money at the Chamber of Commerce, Race the Base, Fourth of July, the title sponsor for the Fourth of July, Winter Wonderland, Serve Los Alba, State of the City, Los Alba School Broadcast, something that's very close to my heart, National Night Out, and I can continue with about 20 other offerings. You have a very difficult decision and a very difficult job. I have found, when I first started in the chamber, you just don't know what you don't know. I didn't understand the value of partnership in a utility, and it's, it goes beyond friendship, it goes, when someone steps up and is there when you need them, and volunteers, even if you didn't know you needed them. I find that to be exponentially true of Republic. I really urge this council to weigh that in your consideration. When you are looking for someone, I could go over the Yelp reviews, you are, you are more than able to go over those Yelp and Google reviews. I'm a small business, I know that comes half and half, right? You never know what's going to be. But what I'm seeing is a lot of, a lot of calls to the city, a lot of problematic problems that perhaps need to be addressed on the front end. When you're not, when we haven't even come up with the serious considerations the restaurants are going to be dealing with, with all of the, the waste, the waste that's coming up. If I was looking for a partner, and I often do, Manny will tell you, I have been known to use his cell phone number often when I need a question answered, he has never failed to answer his phone call. I am not seeing those same considerations with the other, with your other partner. That's all I had to say. I want to thank you for all that you do for our community, and I appreciate the time to speak.
Thank you. Next, we have Jackie Kaplan-Wiggins, I believe it is.
Good evening, Mayor Turco and Honorable City Council. My name is Jackie Kaplan-Wiggins, and I'm the Vice President and Chief Operating Officer of Fridas Incorporated. I'm here to recommend that you continue with your services with Republic as our waste removal company. We have been located, Fridas has been located in Los Alamos for the last 20 years. We have been located, Fridas has been located in Los Alamos for the last 27 years. For the past several years, I've had the pleasure of personally dealing with Manny directly as our main point of contact. His service, follow-through, and attention to detail has been impeccable. When California mandated the disposal of organic materials in special bins a few years ago, Manny made sure that we were not only aware of the requirement, but walked us through the entire process, so we were able to be in compliance. Our business needs have changed over, in regards to trash pickups over the years, and making any changes required little or no effort. In today's business environment, we understand that minimizing cost and the price we pay for outside services are necessary. But we would be remiss if we didn't consider the actual cost, not price, of making changes. For our company, that means setting up a new vendor, that means our whole finance team has to reorganize how we pay for our Republic Services. Our operations team has to work with a new company to change out all of our bins, all of our locks, and of course, we would have to find out whenever we have a change, what we frequently do, who we contact, which typically would take multiple phone calls and multiple times to outreach, time that we just don't have as we're trying to run our business. So I respectfully request that as a city council, as you are reviewing the reports and the RFP that you get, that you continue with Republic Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Blackburn.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Mark Blackburn, I'm with Univer, I'm the president of Universal Waste Systems, the company that has been recommended tonight. I want to say thank you very much for the opportunity and just going through the whole process. I too grew up in Orange County my whole life. I, I love, I love Los Alamos, I love the area, uh, but we, we worked really hard to put together a great proposal. Tonight I brought, I have my oldest son, Matt, my youngest son, Mike, uh, two of our route supervisors, Tony Arribas, been with the company for 15 plus, and Jaime, uh, Jonathan Jaime has been with us, and he, these two gentlemen would be in charge of the rollout. And to answer that last lady's comment, we have an excellent outreach team, uh, we have 16 full-time outreach people that will be coming through your city and making sure all those keys, all those locks, all the things are taken care of. We have our equipment ready, we have our people ready, we're excited, we appreciate the opportunity, we won't let you down, and we'll be here tonight for any other questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have George Brigham.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council, I'm George Brigham, 3624 Brigham Drive, over here in Los Alamos. I am the Chief Operating Officer of Valley Vista Services of Orange County. We serve the city of Cypress right next door. Uh, our operating facility is just north of Lincoln on Watson Street, so Lincoln and Walker, uh, just north of the Cypress Senior Center. I served this city, uh, for 30 years as the president of Brigham and Disposal, and that was after my father founded the company. I grew up in the business, I've been here in Los Alamos basically my entire life in this area. I merged my company with Republic Services back in 1997, and they're a fine company, they do a great job, and I'm glad to see that they're carrying on our family legacy of the philanthropy, chamber involvement. I also had the privilege of serving twice as the president of the Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce back in the mid 90s, when, uh, Mr. Bates and I used to write a newsletter back in the day, you know, when you actually put out a paper, uh, letter to the community called the Bird's Eye View. That was a long time ago. But, uh, the, the reason I wanted to speak on this item is we also prepared an excellent proposal. Once again, we're right next door, we are in the process right now of rolling out the organics recycling program to 15,000 single-family homes in the city of Cypress. If you look at the rates for the surrounding cities, the proposal from Universal Waste Systems, it's ridiculously low, it's almost laughable. You know, Mark runs a great company, Mark and I have known each other since we were kids, we grew up in the industry, but I don't know what's going on with this 1295 rate. It can't be done, this is the rate that we, that we provided in Los Alamos back in the mid 90s. It can't be done. You know, if Mark wants to stand up here tonight and say he's going to lock this rate in for the next three years, we'll stand behind our rate for the next five years. We will not raise the rate, I'm standing here to tell you that right now. So, you know, I've seen a bait and switch before, you know, I don't know why this rate is so cheap, it doesn't make any sense, and it cannot be subsidized by the commercial, and with the other costs involved, uh, the, uh, street sweeping costs, the administrative fee, the $75,000 a year, so it's 200 grand a year right there just with those two items. You know, I just don't see it happening. You know, I think you really need to sit back and take a, another look at this thing. If you look at the rates in the surrounding cities that have approved their organics program, this rate is 100% below a vast majority of them. Anaheim, Cypress, Buena Park, La Palma, you name, the list goes on and on. Uh, so I, I think you really need to question this rate, but if Mark thinks he can do it, then more power to him, but he needs to lock this rate in and that, and he needs to sign a document says he will not come back for a rate increase, you know, for at least three, maybe five years. I'm telling you, we are going to lock our rate in, we promise you, we will not come back for any sort of a rate increase and will forego the CPI. Because we bid this, as I said in the interview process, you know, we were asked how we arrived at our residential rate. My response was, I sat here with my partner, Dave Perez, and my response to the question was, we bid this to be sustainable, and that's what Republic did as well, and many of the other proposers. There were several that didn't, but this is far and away the, the lowest, this is, it's, it's absurd. And it's, that's the end of my comments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to make a comment? If you do, feel free to come up to the podium. Okay, seeing none, thank you for all your comments. Uh, we will now go to staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually going to turn this over to, uh, obviously someone who's been doing a lion's share of the work on this one, uh, our Development Services Director, Ron Noda, to make a presentation. Also here is Michael Ballier, who is our independent, um, consultant on this matter.
Hey, good evening. Um, the city of Los Alamos, it, um, sent out an RFP request for proposal because our current, uh, agreement with Consolidated Disposal Services, DBA Republic Services is set to expire at the end of this year, December 31st, 2021. It is, it, uh, at the expiration date, it would have been a 10-year contract. The RFP was sent out, uh, for the collection transfer, processing, recycling, and disposal of residential refuse, uh, been served residential commercial sector refuse, and also that the collection, processing, and marking of residential commercial sector recyclable, and of course, uh, because of SB 1383, the collection processing and accept, uh, acceptable landfill diversion of organic waste. Again, SB 1383, um, like one of the speakers stated, is a mandate that is coming down from the state of California, and so we as a staff and we as a city are very aware of that mandate coming in. The RFP was advertising the local paper, uh, city's website, and notices were emailed to all the haulers providing franchise services, uh, to jurisdictions, Orange County. Uh, we held a mandatory meeting, pre-proposal meeting on Thursday, May 27, 26. Uh, nine firm attended that mandatory, uh, meeting, uh, but ultimately, seven firms submitted their proposal. Um, after, uh, when the proposed, the RFP was out, the committee review and bidder selection process, I'm going to go over that, uh, the city council approved the process of nominating and, uh, voting in a review committee member from each of the city's commission, um, the planning commission, the Parks Recreation Culture Art Commission, and the Traffic Commission. Um, so, uh, I went to each, uh, commission, and they nominated and again voted in a person. Um, ultimately, one member of the committee withdrew from the process, about, uh, 25, 30% of the way in. Um, but, uh, again, uh, the three, uh, there was, uh, three left over, uh, two of, uh, one from the Traffic Commission, one from the Parks Recreation Culture Art Commission, and a city staff person was also included in the review committee as well. Um, and each of these individual, uh, kind of brought their own unique, uh, take to the waste hauling services in Los Alamos. Uh, you know, we had one of the committee members that lived in a, uh, single-family resident, you had another one that lived in a single-family resident, but in, um, backs up to an alley, right? So he was talking, um, about, um, some of the issues with illegal dumping, and of course, the city staff person brought in, um, his take on the process and dealing with the trash company, the, the 1383 mandates, et cetera. Okay? Um, again, each committee member, I, I want to thank them tremendously because they took a lot of time and a lot of effort in reviewing the documents. These documents aren't like a 10-page document, some of them were very, very thick binders, 50 pages, 75 pages, and, um, I'm telling you, each committee member probably reviewed each one of them probably three separate times, right? And so again, um, you know, I, I want to thank them for their time and their effort in during this process. Uh, like Chet mentioned, Mr. Ballier of, uh, was hired to assist us and lead us through this process. Uh, Mr. Ballier has 30 years of experience in the waste hauling business, and he's done multiple RFPs for many cities up and down the state of California, and so, um, he assisted us through this. So again, the RFP document disclosed all the expectations of the cities, uh, what type of services we wanted, uh, the type of different mandates we wanted from the 1383, SB 1383, and again, seven firms submitted their proposal. When we met initially as a review committee, we had a scoring criteria, and the scoring criteria is stayed in your packet. There was 14 areas that we looked at, and each was assigned a category value. Uh, we, we kind of talked it over as a review committee, and we did alter the category values according to the, the review committee consensus on importance of certain items. Uh, so one important item, of course, is pricing, uh, proposed rates, and so that accounted for approximately 30% of the total scores. So again, um, and then another one that I want to point out is SB 1383 compliance, which approximated about 10% of the total scores. So again, each of the categories, 14 categories, each of the review committee took a look at all that, including financial, safety, and customer services, uh, operation, uh, we did a reference check on a lot of the, um, the firms that submitted their bid, and again, uh, again, I, I want to thank the review committee because they went above and beyond the expectation of staff in terms of looking at and doing their diligence on the, the, the review process. So on September 13th, 2021, we brought all of the proposals, uh, bidders in for an interview, so the review committee can ask questions, and, um, we did. You know, there was many questions going back and forth, and the process of there was each, um, interview was about 15 minutes long, 10 minutes of it was approximately for Q and A. The last five minutes, uh, we gave each bidder a chance, what we called it was the elevator speech, to pitch to this, uh, review committee, reason why the city of Los Alamos should choose them as our provider for the next seven years, which is the duration of the contract that we're asking for. Uh, final review committee was held on September 21. At this meeting, members presented their final scoring, and, uh, we talked about a lot of different things, uh, including transition, including pricing, SB 1383, equipment, et cetera, et cetera. And again, um, you can see right there at the table, that shows the summary of the review committee. The review committee, uh, as you noted, uh, looking at the table there, uh, selected, uh, is, uh, recommending that Universal Waste System, um, be, um, you know, it's, it's, it was their consensus top choice, they came out number one, and the reason why was the proposed rate residential of 1295 per household per month, which is $3.20 less than their closest bidder. As a point of reference, we put there that, uh, it is currently 165, a dollar 65 less per household per month. Uh, UWS currently owns and operates nearly all of their key facilities required for SB 1383 compliance. Okay? Um, they are in the process of, um, final construction stages of their ORX machine, organic waste, which will help in assisting the city reach its mandate, state, uh, set by the state, which is 75%. Um, UWS proposed residential rate is 999, um, per less than, uh, other bidder that currently owns all their, their facility. So this is very important because when you know, own nearly all your facilities, you're, you can control your own rate, uh, and set your own rate, you're not at the, the mercy of another property owner or another landfill. So this is something that we discuss as a review committee. The UWS proposed commercial rate is the second lowest among all the bidders, right? And again, um, like I stated in the staff report, that UWS provides a very nice blend of residential and commercial waste. Uh, I'd like to point out that ultimately, the residents and the businesses of Los Alamos will, uh, bear the cost of the residential services here in Los Alamos. So that's why, again, going back to the, um, scoring, 30% of the scoring was because of the proposed rates. Uh, we also requested in the RFP other items such as, um, monthly citywide bulky item sweeps, again, to address our illegal dumping in the alleyways that we have, again, household hazardous waste, uh, RNG, renewable natural gas vehicles, and annual collection of holiday trees. Again, you know, I, proposed rates again was 30% of the matrix, but again, it is not the only selection criteria, you know? Um, again, we talked about many items such as customer service, we did do our diligence on asking questions and doing homework on that. We did talk about, uh, equipment, we talked about, uh, safety, we talked about, uh, longevity, about, again, we are, the review committee was very aware that this is a seven-year contract with three, one-year extension for a possible 10-year extension. And, um, again, we feel, uh, and I say we because I was part of the review committee, uh, that UWS can handle the city of Los Alamos refuse, uh, and, um, recyclable collection. They've been in operation for the past 35 years, they have over 500 employees, they're a million-dollar-plus company, uh, they, again, operate in three different states, um, and so they have experience in terms of servicing cities for their waste and recyclable and organics, and, uh, we just think that, uh, with the blend of the rates, the service, again, that's why you see in the matrix there that they scored top among the raider sheets. Uh, city fees there, you could read right there that, uh, at the, as prescribed by the RFP, the selected firm will require to remit the following fees to the city. We are increasing the franchise fee from eight to 10%. There's a, um, franchise monitoring compliance assistance fee paid, payable by January 1st, 75,000 each year. Uh, there's a reimbursement fee for this, uh, RFP process that they, they will have to pay to the city, they will have to get a business license, and of course, uh, embedded in the RFP was a payment of the city's street sweeping services that is currently out to bid. Okay? Again, um, this is a recommendation of the review committee process. We went through an extensive, uh, again, with Mike Ballier, and I want to point out, um, Michelle Mueller, our analyst, was part of the process as well. We looked at the RFP process, we talked about the RFP process and the RFP scoring, uh, we interviewed, and again, this is the recommendation of the review committee process, according to our matrix, that, uh, United Waste Services System was the top one, um, among all three of the raiders that were, um, participating. Again, I want to put my heartfelt thank you to the committee members, uh, to Mr. Mike Ballier, I want to thank you all, to the bidders out there, um, that service, uh, that put in a bid, and again, um, I'm here, uh, Mr. Ballier's here to answer any questions or provide any, um, comments or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we, uh, move to comments or, or other questions, I think Councilmember Bates would like to say something.
Yes, uh, Council, thank you for allowing me to serve with the committee. I too want to thank the committee members, Ron included, Mike and Michelle, all for their very, I mean, they really went out of their way to do an excellent job. I think as you saw by the box I brought in with me today, uh, the proposals were very detailed and very well done. I would just say to start with, that I think we were very fortunate to have seven good quality firms who submitted bids to us. Uh, as some of you know, uh, I've been in the solid waste business for As some of you know, I've been in the solid waste business for a year or two. And in fact, I heard Isabel talk. Well, Isabel, if you go back far enough, 19, late 1970s, I had your job with the County of Orange. So I'm quite familiar with many of the contractors that made proposals to us. And as I say, all of them were good. I think, as has been said, Mike did a really good job in trying to analyze all the different proposals and give the committee really good information to work with. I don't think there's any question in my mind that Universal Waste will be able to do the job. And I'll comment a little more here as to what I think may be happening, because I've heard some of the comments about a pretty low rate. Certainly on the residential side, they're very good and very competitive on the commercial side. I think one of the other things that I like about the operation, as some of the other operations were, it's 500 people, so it's big enough, but not too big. And we have the president of the company sitting here and the vice president, who's actually going to be responsible for our city. So I think the responsiveness here is going to be very excellent to our residents and our businesses. So I think that's something that we definitely need to consider. In terms of a record, I think their safety record is very solid. They, when you look at the transition and you look at their background, they've been able to transition. We're, I guess, in some regards, lucky that we're not this huge city where they're having to make this major transition in operations. We're a fairly small city. The transition should be fairly easy, although there will be, like any other change, there will be some glitches along the way. But the bottom line is, who benefits? And I think the bottom line is financially, our residents and businesses will benefit. Solid Waste, I mean, Universal Waste Systems has an excellent track record from the references we were able to check on both the commercial and the residential side. Their references are quite good. I think, I've been living in this community for 43 years now, and so I've seen a lot of different organizations over time. Georgia's Outfit, we had then Republic, and they provided excellent service. These companies are doing a good job, and I think Universal Waste will do a good job for us here. And the bottom line is, what's best for our residents and who can provide quality service and yet at a reasonable price? Now, do I think that Universal Waste would like to operate in a full-service city, both on the residential side and on the commercial side here in Orange County? And maybe might that bring us them some business additionally to our business? I think there's a good possibility of that. But bottom line is, that doesn't mean our residents won't benefit and shouldn't benefit from their putting in a very competitive proposal to us here tonight to consider in terms of us as a council making our decisions. So Mayor, thank you and Council for letting me participate with the committee. And again, I think the committee devoted a lot of time and effort to coming up with a very solid recommendation for Council to consider tonight.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Does anyone else have any comments, questions?
Just a couple of questions. I noticed in the review that there were only three reviewers. Who was the missing one? Because there were four reviewers total, correct?
Councilmember Hasselbrink, I did not do a written review. My thinking was that as a council member, I was going to have to vote on it, so therefore I didn't want to do a category-by-category review of all the proposals that may have locked me in to not being able to make the comments I was just able to make and how the voting would have to go for me on other options that might come before the council. So I didn't do a miracle rating. I certainly could have, but I decided not.
But when you volunteered for this committee, that was part of the job. There was still a conflict back then, as you're stating now. If there was a conflict now, there's a conflict back then. So I'm not sure why that process was bypassed by you.
Well, someone else could have certainly replaced me on the committee because I made a comment almost immediately when the committee first meant that I didn't feel comfortable putting in the numbers on each of the vendors. But I feel very comfortable, as you just heard, giving you a recommendation based on my going through that box of proposals and sitting in on every interview and every minute of the discussion that was involved with the proposal.
Right, but here's the problem that I have, just perceptually. You felt as though it was a conflict not to numerically rate them, but you're coming in and giving us information that we're not privy to now because you were on that committee, but you didn't complete the process.
There's nothing that I've told you that Ron pretty much hasn't already said. So you can ignore what I just said, or you can listen to what Ron has just said and choose to act on that. So up to you.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about, there was a process set into place and the process wasn't followed as far as it comes to us. I'm, I've got a couple of concerns that I would think we could probably get around. I'm concerned about the low rate. And once again, I wasn't privy to all the interviews, so I don't understand that rate. I wasn't able to ask questions and kind of make and prove it type thing. And I'm sure that was, but I wasn't privy to that. So I'd like more information on that. And because this was an RFP and not a bid, we have a little bit more leeway. In Section 4 of our RFP, let me put my glasses on. It says that we reserve the right to request further written information and interview top-ranked proposers, plural. So I would like to propose that we take the top two, or we could take the top three. The top two would be Universal Republic. The top three would be Universal Republic and American Reclamation. And as a council, come back and let them negotiate with them to come back with the best and final offer, just because I think there's so much at stake here. And the price is low, and we all jump at that because prices don't go down ever. But I'm also a firm believer of you get what you pay for.
Mayor Protam, I'm just, I just want to check my chart. You're saying the top three were Universal, Republic?
The ones that, yeah, sorry, and Republic and American Reclamation. Those were the ones that scored first or second by any of the evaluators. Or we could do the lowest bid and our incumbent. We have the leeway to do whatever we consider top.
Okay, I mean, the concern that I have is, you know, and I'll state this at the outset. I think we've been very pleased with Republic Services, and this is no reflection on them. But this is, you know, this is a process that we set up to go through, to have a committee who would ask those questions, who would get the presentations, who would do all the hard work of reviewing the RFPs and make a recommendation to us. So I'm confident if they believe and city staff believes, yes, Mike, go ahead. I don't mind, I don't, I don't mind being interrupted. That was a very polite way of...
Related to your questions, when you're done, I thought if I could go through a couple of them, they might alleviate some concerns, they might not. But I feel compelled to throw in my two cents because I sat through all of it and...
Yeah. And I appreciate what Mayor Protam Hasselbrink is saying. I'm not necessarily disagreeing with her. I'm just, I want to express confidence that we have a committee and staff that I know did the hard work here. And I trust that they have evaluated all these issues. If they see a really low price, they're going to ask, and I know they did ask, what is the source for that low price? But Mike can explain that in further detail. Thank you.
Yeah, well, a couple of things. Number one, Universal wasn't the lowest bidder. Ware Disposal was the lowest bidder, and there were some concerns about the sustainability of those rates. What I do to help in the process is I do what's called a rate matrix, where I take all of your existing service levels and then ballpark the new programs. You know, organics are, need to go out to half the business community above what we have right now. And then I put every proposer's rates into that matrix, so we were comparing apples to apples overall. So again, Universal Waste was slightly under $400,000. Most of the bidders were $440,000, $450,000. Republic Services was the highest at $530,000 as far as the projected monthly revenue. So again, at $400,000 roughly per month, it's not that Universal Waste is not going to have any money, that they're so low. And again, when you look at your rates that way, you'll see that about 88% of your franchise revenue comes from the commercial and industrial sectors. You have a very small residential sector. So it's even possible to say, hey, I'm going to pick up your 1,600 residential customers for free, but I'm going to charge your commercial businesses $50,000 a month more spread out over the community to cover it. So again, what I think you have here is a business decision to be aggressive in proposing rates to the city because for a company like Universal Waste that does not have a franchise in Orange County, they have a franchise in downtown LA, they have franchises in unincorporated LA County, five of them, but they do not have an Orange County franchise. So it is very valuable to them, more so than, say, CRNR, who is one of our bidders. They have 18 franchises in Orange County. You're not going to get a special consideration. So I think Councilmember Bates' point is well-taken, that there was a dedication to try to get the city's business by being aggressive in pricing. But based on my 30 years' experience and relative comparison to the other bidders, they were lower than all but one, but they weren't so low that they couldn't perform the work. And again, as Ron mentioned, they've invested and already owned their own material recovery facility. They have a composting facility. They have the 24th Street facility in LA County where they're putting in an ORX machine that they purchased. They have five, well, I don't know if it's five, but they have all brand-new Mack trucks ready to go to service the city. So again, Manny, Republic Services have been great, but I've been around for a lot of their term here. I was brought in in 2013 to audit them the first time, back again in 2015 to audit. And a previous person, a couple people before Manny that was in the city rep position, was not doing a good job. The city was very unhappy, and that individual ended up being fired. So you also had a situation shortly thereafter where there was a standoff between Republic and the city council. Republic wanted you to do a universal rate increase to pay for a small organics pilot program, and the council pushed back. And eventually, the council, it was a wise decision. You were able to get 40% less on the rates, the option for people who use the service to be the only ones to pay for it rather than spreading it to everybody else. But we ended up getting a compliance order from Cal Recycle because it took us so long to win that battle. So the last four years have been excellent, and Manny is wonderful, one of the best city reps I deal with, and I work with 13 cities. But the reality is, the second-best city rep I worked with for Waste Management is a gentleman named Hashem Shokar, who was part of the CRNR bid team. He was with Waste Management when I worked with him. So, you know, other firms can hire people. So again, you're looking at, can they provide the services? We've got new trucks with Universal. Republic was going to use 2016 vehicles, of which some of the committee members had received complaints or concerns. So, and you're looking at approximately 1.7 million more in residence and business rates that they will be paying for the privilege of staying with Republic as opposed to going with Universal Waste. So when you weigh all those factors, and I'm a big one for loyalty, and Republic certainly has done a wonderful job these last four years under Manny. But again, you have to be loyal to your constituents as well. So your job isn't easy. I don't enjoy doing RFPs because I know and like most of these people. I deal with them in my other cities. So it's like picking between your kids almost. But I do think the committee was very conscientious, asked a lot of questions, did a lot of research. And I think they arrived at the best choice for Los Alamitos at this point in time. Not necessarily that, you know, Universal's a better firm than Republic, or Mark's better than Manny, but the package that you're being proposed and the pricing and all of that all together, I think the committee got it right. I didn't get a vote, but I agree with their vote. And then I'll leave it to you.
Michael, quick question. From our staff report, it says that Universal has a presence in Costa Mesa and Newport Beach. And you said that they are not in Orange County.
They don't have an exclusive franchise. They have a non-exclusive franchise in Irvine and Newport Beach, and they have a permit in Costa Mesa, which is in the process of transitioning to a formal, non-exclusive franchise agreement. So semantics, but...
Okay, but they do have a presence in Orange County.
They do have a presence in Orange County, yes.
That 1.7 million figure you gave, Mike, what is that, how many years is that over projected?
That's over one year. So if your total projected revenue is $537,000 per month versus $393,000 per month, times 12 is roughly how I arrived at that figure.
Okay, so we're looking at $12 million over the life of a seven-year contract? Something like that?
Yeah.
That's correct.
My math's a little fuzzy.
12.1 million.
Okay.
Over seven years.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For you. Trying, and I like things very simple, because I assume that a lot of people are like me and they're hearing all this for the very first time. To Mayor Protam's point, exclusive versus non-exclusive, I assume Los Alamitos would be an exclusive contract?
Correct.
Means they're the only ones that are picking up all of our trash but in Newport and Irvine. And there was another one, because I saw it too.
Costa Mesa.
Costa Mesa. They do have other haulers.
All three of those cities have a residential hauler that's separate from their commercial side. And in their commercial side, the businesses and large multifamily, they're non-exclusive, meaning there's multiple haulers that can service that sector. They have to compete for the business. It's not like an exclusive franchise where one firm gets it all.
Okay, and then further clarifying, you, correct me if I am interpreting this incorrectly, but basically their residential rate is so much lower because they can make up for that in industrial or commercial? It's in commercial pickups?
Yeah, their commercial was competitive and about online with all the other haulers. So again, around $200,000 a month in revenue. For example, you had one bidder that was here, there's about $210,000 per month with my rate matrix. Universal came in at $191,000. So they're fairly close there, but that residential rate is only $28,000 in revenue for Republic, and the highest was $50,000. Most of them were $38,42. So again, because you only have 1,600 roughly ratepayers on the residential side, it's not a lot of their total revenue coming in. So again, it's an artificially low rate. You couldn't do that rate if you had no other revenue coming in. So commercial is subsidizing it a bit, but when you compare their commercial rates with others, they're not exorbitantly high. So it's really going to be a minimal impact on everybody. Some of the best rates in Orange County, frankly, if not the best.
Okay, thank you.
More comments?
No, I'm ready for a motion whenever the council's ready.
One quick question, Michael, is there's no in the proposal, there's no of a lock-in for any specific time. They can come back?
Well, the city attorney, I think, could negotiate with them. That was one of the questions that the committee had, of course, in doing its due diligence as well. How can you do these rates? They seem low, and that's where a lot of this discussion came in. And so I believe the firm offered to do, you know, a couple of years without a rate increase. That was how confident they were that they can control the cost. They own the facility that they're hauling to and tipping. They don't have to pay another firm. And so they could, you know, stick with these rates for a period of time. So again, that would be something potentially you could negotiate. But again, with what was proposed, you know, we had somebody refer to, you know, I'll stay at my rates for five years. Well, their proposed rates were $23 a household. So again, that was the highest rate. And again, that was a very good company, great ties in the community. But again, they had the highest residential rate. So it was, there was, you know, challenges with each, but universally, the best choice, I think, was Universal Waste.
Okay, I'd still, I'm still stuck on my original ideas, so I'm going to make a motion... Okay, I'd still, I'm still stuck on my original ideas, so I'm going to make a motion, see if I can get a second that...
Oh, sorry, go ahead. I had some comments before.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The motions, yeah. Mike, how confident are we? I mean, there's a few issues, you know, with the transition that, that's one of the concerns I have. If were we to move forward with Universal about our confidence level in a successful transition? I mean, number, you know, all the bins that would need to be delivered, you know, staffing, you know, sufficient number of trucks, all of that. I mean, I know all of that was evaluated by the committee, but I'd like to get your take on...
Yeah, no, and again, you know, the Councilmember Hasselbrink brought up the interview process that can be triggered as part of the RFP that was written in there. We decided to do that interview process with all seven firms. And so again, with each, there were questions, concerns of the committee that we wanted to address and hear from the firm directly rather than just trying to glean it from 100 pages of a proposal. So that was one of the questions. So again, they have all new trucks available purchased in their yard, so they're not going to have to wait for the trucks to service the city. They have a manufacturer's letter, IPL, for 6,000 carts to deliver in early December. And they also, when asked about that, said that they did have a couple backup manufacturers lined up in case there are any delays in the cart delivery. But again, it's early December. They're going to be rolling those out in the end of December, first week in January. They have, I think, about 1,000 metal bins in inventory. Those would be the ones that service the commercial sector, and I think you have 300-some customers. Again, we were talking businesses earlier, but you have strip malls and areas that multiple businesses share the same bins. And again, this is a 500-employee company that's servicing a lot of cities, so they have a lot of containers that they have to have in spare. So I imagine they would be ordering other containers so that they would have more backups, but they do have enough, at least from our questions, to actually meet the rollout schedule, which is very aggressive because we're talking a couple months away. So again, that firm is here today if you want to ask them about that, but from our queries in that area, we were satisfied they could meet the schedule.
Okay, thank you. I saw one of the rating points was customer satisfaction. How did we, and I know this was touched on, but how did we gauge that? How did we figure out how to rate that?
Well, I was hoping someone would ask me that because I have the Yelp reviews for Republic and they're one star as well. It's kind of like property managers. If you live in a managed community, everybody hates them. Nobody's going to rate a hauler typically because they do a good job. It's a thankless position. What we did is, we had, the city contacts were contacted in part. We also had a committee member that knew people in multifamily properties and construction trades, things like that, asked them about the various haulers, what their experiences were. So again, all of them are good firms. Again, that's the problem with Yelp or a lot of these services is really the angry people are going to put a review down. The ones that think they're just fine aren't ever going to say anything, and the ones that love them probably have other things to do. So they were all very good. Nobody was a bad firm, but Universal's comments tended to be that they could get a real person on the phone when they called, that they were responsive to their claims, and even in my dealings, because I managed the hauling communities for a couple cities. So I had a call six months ago. Somebody was complaining about the truck had spilled something in front of their property, and I called Universal, and they sent somebody out the next day and steam cleaned it up. So again, I think they're all going to be relatively good, but I think Universal's reviews on a whole, and Ron can back me up, are probably a little bit better. They're among the highest as far as the satisfaction.
Commercial side.
What was that, Councilmember Bates?
I was just going to say, we have a lot of good information from Universal is on the commercial side, although on the residential side in LA County, they also have good reviews.
Okay. And then as far as SP 1383, was the committee, and were you satisfied that, confident that, based on everything we know, that Universal would be able to?
Yeah, no, I think it's important to note that the ORIX equipment, Universal's not the first one to use it. Waste Management, which either Waste Management or Republic Services is the largest trash-hauling company at this point in time. They have an ORIX system in Sun Valley. City of LA, County of LA, and Cal Recycle did a study on the machine to find out how much it could divert from a mixture of trash and organic waste, and it diverted 54%, which until 2025, 50% is the requirement. But keep in mind, this 54% is trash mixed with organics. If you start collecting clean organics, which we're already doing with our businesses, and you press that through the machine, you're going to get 95%, 98% organics liquids. The manufacturer of those machines, Energia, owns an anaerobic digester, and contractually they have to take all that material. So you have a closed-loop system that they control that if they were, you know, just going to do mixed processing and saying that was going to get to 75%, I would have had concern, the committee would have had concern. But they're not. They're going to do source separated on the organic side, but you do have the potential ability on the multifamily side, let's say, where putting trash carts out in alleys with food waste in them may be problematic. You could go with a, potentially a two-cart system and use this technology. So it gives the city's options. Is it a complete solution? Possibly not, but it can be used in tandem with the other facilities and services they propose, most certainly, to put you in compliance.
Okay, thank you. And this is a comment more for perhaps our city attorney, but, you know, to the extent we do make a move, you know, I think it's imperative that we ensure compliance with, you know, the representations made in the RFP through contract, you know, to ensure that, you know, SB 1383 is, you know, they're on the path towards that, you know, service is done well. We have, you know, timely delivery of bins, all of those items. It's just something to consider there. So, you know, just a couple of additional comments. You know, when this process started, I knew the committee was doing it. You know, on a personal level, I was hoping Republic would come out ahead because of the relationship that Manny has in our community. He's been wonderful the last four years, and the service that the company has provided at least the last four years, in my experience, has also been wonderful as well. But, you know, from my perspective, our function here, and it's not always easy, especially in situations like this, is to look out for the people that live in Los Alamos and the people that work in Los Alamos. And we have a committee here who's really evaluated this, who's taken the time, a lot more time than we have, and reviewed the details and reviewed the proposals and done research and contacted other cities and other jurisdictions and contacted customers and done all of that. And what they found is that the best thing for Los Alamos residents and businesses is to make this move. And, you know, just on, you know, and the money's not everything, of course, but if we can save our residents $12 million or more, depending on what you're comparing it to, you know, that's a big deal. That's a lot of money. So with that, I'll pass along the microphone to see if anyone has...
May I make a comment real quick? I just want to reiterate what you said is, you know, during the review committee, we tried to keep everything what I like to call black and white, what was embedded in the RFP. You know, I want to commend Manny, you know. Remember, my background was of recreation. All those events that one of the speakers stated today, I'm very aware of all those events and the support that Republic Services and Manny has provided the city. But unfortunately, the RFP didn't quote, you know, didn't state that you have to have the, you know, the king of all, you know, municipal relationship managers in the city, you know? And if the RFP did have that embedded in there, I would think Republic would probably be number one. But I just want to, you know, state that, you know, the RFP process, again, me as a staff person did talk, we did broach that, along with all the questions that you, as a council, stated, but we did identify, you know, the relationship that Manny has, the boards that he served, the Republic and all that stuff. So again, you know, kudos to Manny and the job that he did and the Republic team. But again, we try to keep it very black and white according to what our RFP stated.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Whenever the appropriate time is, I'd like to move the staff recommendations since I was involved with the committee.
Councilmember Bates did mention making a motion first, but how do we do it if we've got a couple of different motions?
Do I have a question?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Question goes first. It's cold in here. Is it just me?
No.
That's not my question. My question is, the mention of bins en route, where are they coming from? And what's the backup if they're overseas somewhere and have to get here? Because I don't know if anybody else is following what's happening.
There's a lot of backup at the port. IPL is a Southern California manufacturer.
Do they?
Northern California, so.
Okay.
Again, they're here, they can speak to that, but we were provided...
I don't know all the rules. I know I can talk to you, I don't know if I can talk to them.
If you can, I'd be glad to answer.
Okay, well, that was my only question. I'd have asked you, but I didn't know I could.
City Attorney, is that permissible?
Absolutely, ask questions.
Okay. Mr. Blackburn, if you'd like to come up, please.
Sorry. So we have a company called IPL. They guaranteed us delivery, and we have two backup companies if they don't. And as far as metal containers for your commercial accounts, we have those in stock between our different yards. And we have a bunch of new ones ordered because we want to get you as many new ones as we can, and we'll probably transition out most of, so you have new containers here. And that's what we'll shoot for, but at least we have, you know, good reconditioned bins if we don't get them all delivered by the first. But we have plenty of backup for you.
And the containers would be, you know, residential as well? It sounds like you have stock for commercial. But we would have those in time for a successful transition?
Absolutely. That's what we're good at. We do really good transition work. We have great people. I know all the companies do, but I can tell you, our people are excellent. Our outreach team will come in. Everything's electronic. We'll visit every customer here. We'll talk to every customer here. We'll make sure all the service levels are right, what kind of bins they want, what days they want. Everything will be, and it'll all go into our system. Everything will be double-checked and triple-checked, and we'll be here all week, every week, until it's perfect. And that's what we do. So I give you my word, as a president of this company, that we are dedicated 100% to make you proud of what we do. And I tell you that.
Thank you. And does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Blackburn?
I don't know if I can ask you, though. Okay, well, you tell me if I can. I'm going to just say it, and then you say, you say, no, Tanya, no. So there's a lot of chatter about how long the rates. Is that just something that will be stipulated once we sign? Or is that something that you already have in mind and can share? Because I thought, you know, they're like, oh, seven years, and then a three-year extension. So I assumed that it was seven years. But a friend over here said a couple of years, and where I come from, that's like two. So is it like two, or is it like five? Or can you speak to that now?
As far as the rates go?
Uh huh.
Well, you know, I know rates are a big concern, and this city's a little different because you have so much commercial compared to residential. You have 88% commercial, you have 12% residential. So what we did, to try to be fair with everybody in the city, our matrix, we went through and we put all our costs together. We didn't really want to try to subsidize with one or the other. We wanted to give, we wanted to give the city some good news for change and a better rate. To come in and start with a better rate's a good way to start, you know, for us as a new company. And that's why we came up with a good residential rate. And then our commercial rates are right in line with what we do. When we were in our interview process, there was concern and a lot of questions on rate, and I said I'd be willing to guarantee the rate for two years instead of one year. And, you know, with this crazy world, I don't know what it's going to be like in three, four years. But we didn't come in here to lowball a rate. I don't appreciate that. We didn't do that to lowball a rate. We came at it a little bit of a different angle, looking at the whole city as a whole, and that's how we got that rate. We're not here to raise your rates. We're not here to subsidize people, and we don't even raise our rates a lot of times when our rate increases are due, if we don't have any extra costs. And I can tell you that with different cities that we've gone an extra year without a rate increase. So we look at for the long term, and we look to do the city right. And as far as being a part of the community, we will be a huge part of your community. Anything you need, we're here. We would consider ourselves part of the community, you know, with this contract. So I know Republic is a good company. I know a lot of people that work there. And as Mike said, the companies are, it's pretty hard, they're all good. I think for the City of Los Alamos, we're better. I'll say that. I think it's perfect for us. The locations of all our facilities, the work we've done, we're going to get you, SB 1383, you're going to get your, you're going to be probably the first company in Orange County or the first city in Orange County that gets really great diversion, because we've got a lot of different things we're working on. Way too much to go in and tell you tonight, but we have, we've been working hard for a long time to get to some facility that will actually get the diversion that the state wants. And I did not know you were under a compliance order at one point, but you will never be under a compliance order with us, and we will get you that 75% diversion. I guarantee you that. We have the ability to do it right now with what we're working on. So that's a promise.
Mr. Blackburn, I hear you saying two years, you've guaranteed rate. I mean, what is a rate? And I know this is subject to negotiation, nothing's finalized. What does a rate increase look like after that? Oh, go ahead, Mike.
If I could, it's built into your franchise agreement, it's into most. Every year, the hauler gets a CPI increase so that today's dollars that you agree upon keep up with inflation. Then there's also extraordinary rate increases that require council approval. A hauler can come before you and say, hey, the price of fuel has tripled, I need an X amount increase to get that. So again, typically, the rates in year two of a franchise agreement will increase by CPI. So it's not that the rates will stay flat at $1,295 residential forever. They'll adjust each year based upon CPI.
Okay, okay, appreciate that. Did you want to say something?
Well, I was just going to comment that one of the things that obviously wasn't in the RFP, so we didn't give it a lot of credence, was the fact that the company, Universal Waste, said that they'd maintain the rate, the $12 rate, for the first two years. So we wouldn't see an increase until the third year, and that would be no more than the CPI unless there was some extraordinary cost that they had to then come to the council to try to get us to approve to add to the overall rate.
Right, exactly. We were willing to do that. Okay, understood, thank you.
Thank you.
And we lost our city clerk.
No, she turned the air off for me.
There she is.
That's how y'all know I'm her favorite.
City manager, did you want to say something?
No, sir.
Okay. I saw you reach for the microphone, I thought. Okay, so it appears we have two competing motions. How do we address these? Do we vote on them both, or do we...
I'm going to defer to the city attorney.
Sequentially, I believe Mayor Protem indicated she wanted to make a motion, so I'd recommend if she still wants to make that motion, to see if there's a second and when we take the vote. And if that motion does not carry for lack of a second or lack of a majority vote, then we can entertain a second motion from Councilmember Bates.
Sounds good.
All right, so I'll make the motion that we negotiate with both the recommended vendor, Universal and our incumbent at Republic, and see what the best deal looks like, getting down to the nuts and bolts and rate increases and what they look like and community money and different things like that that weren't addressed in the RFP. But when we get down to the final negotiations, we might flush some more things out, and if the answer's the same, the answer's the same. But I'm just not comfortable making this type of decision with the limited information that I have. Can I ask a question about that? Or I can't ask a question about that?
What's your question? Go ahead.
My only question is, how does that impact RFPs moving forward? Would it open it up where we would do that each time?
Now, RFPs, you have the ability to do that. If it was a request for bid, you have to go with the lowest bidder. But RFPs is the best value services, so there's a little bit more wiggle room in that. It still has to be, obviously, in the best interest of the city, but you do have more negotiation rather than just... negotiation rather than just the dollar signs. You can negotiate other things as well.
So it becomes subject to council consideration now?
So I'm just, I'm recommending that. I don't see what it would hurt, and I would just feel more comfortable, you know, getting to know the recommended vendor a little bit better before we sign on the dotted line, and this is a long contract. Most of us will be out of office when it expires, so I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for future councils and residents and businesses.
If there's no second, Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Any seconds? Okay.
I'll move to approve the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Are you taking role, or am I all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. City manager, you go from here. City attorney and city manager, take it from here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.